Okay. Good evening. I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. This meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under the Virginia Code 2237082 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutorily required or necessary to continued operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. The motion is in order for the approval of the closed session agenda. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
My second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how would you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Did it come on? Oh. Next, the Prince William County School Board, the motion is, what am I doing? Moving on, the motion to enter closed session. A motion is in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with Division Council and staff the performance appointment transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific officers, employees, and appointees under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A 1 and 8. Two, to discuss and consult with legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemptions pertaining to specific students under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A 2 and 8. And three, to receive information and discuss with Division Council and actual and staff actual or probable litigation in specific legal matters involving specific staff and students under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A 7 and 8, and to dispense with the attendance of the superintendent and staff as necessarily as necessary as provided by Virginia Code Section 22.1, 22.1-69.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
My second.
Ms. Williams seconds. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay. At this time, the Prince William County School Board will move into closed session and return in approximately one hour. The Prince William County School Board is now returning to open session from closed session. Moving on to the closed session certification. A motion is in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of April 7, 2021 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second. Ms. Ralston, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Did you refresh? There it is.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Outstanding. Motion passes. Moving on to the closed session action items, we do have a motion. Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do you have a second? Ms. Wall.
I second.
Ms. Wall seconds. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing no discussion, please vote. Oh, Ms. Ralston, how do you vote? My apologies.
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Ralston votes with a resounding yes. Yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Excellent. So we're now moving on to the next motion. Motion is in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the request for religious exemption for students RE-24, RE-20-25, and RE-20-26.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wall.
My second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Excellent. Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Right. Oh, right, right. I got to do the purpose of the meeting. Madam Vice Chair, would you like to read the purpose of the meeting?
I will. This meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708-2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through the Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutorily requested, or excuse me, required or necessary to continue the operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities.
Next, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Jessie, would you like to lead this in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Next, moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda. A motion is in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
My second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how would you vote on the agenda?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. I see Ben Kim down there. Welcome, Ben.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay. Excellent. Motion passes. Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Is there a second? Ms. Wall.
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Ms. Wall seconds a motion. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Eight yes unanimous. Motion passes. Moving on to citizen comment time. There is no citizens who've signed up for tonight's meeting.
I'm writing.
Moving on. Ms. Ralston, it's time to come back in here. We need you in here now. Thank you. Next, we'll go to the student representative. I have here Ms. Caroline Silveira, but Mr. Kim, Ben Kim, our senior from Unity Reed High School, our student representative of the school board, will be making our student representative comments for this evening, April 7, 2021. Mr. Kim.
Hey, thank you. That's my first time I've ever seen no citizens' comments. It's crazy. Good evening. I look forward to sharing with you all a survey presentation on how hybrid learning is going so far. But first, I just looked through the agenda, and an item that stood out to me was the fenestration project contract award for Uni Reed. To say that I'm excited would be like an understatement because, you know, I'm not going to be a student there by the time renovation is complete. I think it's really going to help out the students there. It's a much-needed infrastructure investment, and this increase in natural light is going to bring a lot more life into our building, but also save some lighting expenses. I think all the older schools in the county should continue to be renovated so that students can learn in the best environment possible. Let's bring all of our buildings into the 21st century. As for a new superintendent, as a new student senate, we're excited about the new superintendent, Ms. McDade. I think the board BWP did a really fantastic job, and I'm grateful since we were able to be an integral part of the input process. Chicago's pretty cold compared to Virginia, but we still hope for code reds. Still, thank you, Dr. Walts and Mr. Iman. I want to offer an additional thank you to the division's staff, admin, and students working on finalizing COVID-safe nauta proms and spirit weeks and graduations at each of the high schools. They look a lot different than previous years, for sure, but students, especially seniors, really hope to partake in these rites of passages from PGCS to the real world. Lastly, I wanted to highlight a student senator, Ayesha Khan, from Woodbridge High School, Senior High School. Although you may not know Ayesha personally, you've likely seen some of her work. She's the creative mastermind behind the Student Senate Twitter and a true joy to work with. Recently, Ayesha was accepted into some amazing schools, including, you know, Harvard, Yale, Princeton, Dartmouth, and Penn. You guys have masks on, but, you know, our jaws are all dropping. Wherever Ayesha goes, we can't wait to see how she's going to change the world. She makes us all PGCS proud. Now for the survey data. Mr. Stevens, could you cue the? Oh, yes, up here. So first, I just did this student survey of hybrid learning at my school. Let's next slide, please. So about the survey, it was administered to students at my school the week prior to spring break, just the hybrid students. Got about 48 students, which is about 10%, which is the ideal amount of the 500 in-person students in my school. It was in English and Spanish. See the right, some of the demographics of the sample. There they are. Next slide, please. So first, when students were asked about their experience with in-person learning, their responses seemed overwhelmingly positive, as seen by the data. Over 80% reported a positive or very positive experience, as opposed to some very small negatives. So that's great. Next slide, please. Students were also asked about what they saw as the biggest benefits and challenges of in-person instruction. On the left, we see the benefits. We see that 54% figure for having a sense of normalcy. That may indicate that what is most helpful about in-person instruction is the routine, you know, the schedule, the accountability of being in the building. Personally, I was surprised by the only 8% figure for, like, seeing friends in person. So this was insightful data. As for the challenges, we see some potential student support for later start times with an almost 40% number saying waking up earlier to go to school was a challenge. We also see some students maybe missing out on the social aspect of school, which is maybe why they came in person in the first place. From what I've heard and from personal experience, I think most of this comes from lunch, you know, really quiet lunchrooms and stuff. But my school is like, we start to play music there, so I guess that makes it better. And maybe as more students return for quarter four, I know a couple people who did return for quarter four, I hope maybe socialization can improve. Next slide, please. In this question, we ask, you know, which best describes how in-person learning has impacted your academics? There's all to talk about, you know, does in-person help with academics? And over 60% of the respondents said that yes, it did have a positive impact, 31% for no impact, and 6% for negatively impacted. So there's that data. Next slide, please. Some hybrid, since, like, you know, hybrid students, they can be both virtual and in-person. Thought we asked them about any challenges that maybe being teachers being in the building presented for the virtual students. The majority of respondents, as you see, said, you know, there's no challenges, but some did note that internet and audio issues with the mask may be challenges. Next slide, please. To kind of summarize, across grade levels, in-person learning has been a positive experience for hybrid students at Uni Reed. Respondents selected a sense of normalcy as the biggest benefit of in-person instruction. Most of the respondents' academic performances have been positively impacted by in-person instruction, and for the, when they're virtual, there's occasional internet problems and audio disruptions with the mask. Thank you. I can answer any questions on the floor.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kim? Ms. Zargarpur.
Not a question. I just want to thank you for all the work that you guys have done. The Student Senate's been amazing. You guys are such a wealth of information, and you're willing to learn how to do all these things in this period of time where we've got, you know, you can't meet in the same way that you used to before, right? So you've got all these virtual meetings and these things that you're still accomplishing during this pandemic. I just want to congratulate you and thank you for all of your hard work.
Well, thank you. And I, just to add to that, because, you know, I'd like to congratulate you, Mr. Kim, on this great work, the great effort all the students have made this year. The Student Senate, as Ms. Zargarpur pointed out, has done a great job. I think we ought to congratulate Mr. Gervin, Jeff Gervin, and his department for all the work they've done in creating the Student Senate. Our high school social studies departments, our high schools, I know they're working on picking the next round of student senators and school board reps, and so, you know, we continue to thank you, and this process has been really good for the public and for the students, and certainly good for our board. So thank you very much. Moving on, next, the superintendent's time, and I'll take a moment here to introduce our Deputy Superintendent Keith Iman, who is in for Dr. Walts this evening. And I think, you know, sometimes, and I'll take a little privilege here to say that, you know, we don't talk enough about Deputy Superintendent Keith Iman and all the great work he's done and the long years of service he has with our school division. And he has announced his retirement this year. I've gotten a chance over the three years on my board to work with him, gotten to know him even more. His lovely wife has taught my children. They have given their entire life to our school division, the last 16 years of their life, and his wife, Mrs. Iman Janine Iman, continues to rob and work and do some great things for our schools. I think it would be very hard to, just in a few words, wrap up what Keith Iman has meant for Prince William County Schools. But, Mr. Iman, I can't thank you enough, and I think this board thanks you, and, you know, we'll have more time to talk about your retirement and the way you're going to enjoy that, but welcome this evening, and we're happy to hear from you regarding superintendent's time. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Dr. Latif, and I appreciate the comments. They're heartfelt, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and I bring you Dr. Walts' sincere apology for not being able to be with us tonight, and on his behalf, I appreciate the opportunity to update the school board, staff members, parents, students, and community members on the important work occurring during this pandemic. I have good news to share regarding vaccinations for a number of our students. During the month of April, Prince William County Public Schools is partnering with Novant UVA and the Prince William Health District to support the effort to vaccinate our students 16 years and older who qualify as a student with a disability, or those who have an underlying health condition. Our school division has reached out to the parents and guardians of students who may qualify. We are thankful for the partnerships that have made vaccinations available to our staff members. And now to this group of students. During the pandemic, we continue our important efforts to ensure that equity is embedded in all of the work that we do. Faith Thompson, a first-grade teacher at Yorkshire Elementary School, serves as a model for this critical work. Ms. Thompson is working with Bookworm Central and Spark, our education foundation for PWCS, to provide a program that teaches diversity and inclusion using stories. The program is now being used in 117 classrooms in seven schools. Check out this video for more information.
There is more to this program than just reading the books with the student. There is a whole structure that we have given to it. We have built things around it for both the teacher and the student to have not just short-term reflective moments, but really long-term reflection practices around this topic. The teacher guide actually has discussion questions to start classroom discussions with their children. They have classroom activities that further allow the students to experience collectively what the hope of the book was.
I took the vision and my input and the book selection, the books that I picked, and they built a whole program around it with activities and lessons for teachers. There are 10 books. I Am Human, Say Something, All Are Welcome, You Matter, The Day You Begin, The Sandwich Swap, Fried Bread, Same Same But Different, It's Okay to Be Different, which is my favorite one, and The Skin You Live In. So I chose these books because I've read a couple of these over the past couple of years in my classroom. I asked my librarian for some recommendations, and she gave me some great ones, which are included in here, and then some just from looking online and trying to find more book choices, just Googling. So they've come from a little bit from everywhere. This is our alphabet, and this is our alphabet. Same Same But Different. It's very important for kids to see themselves in the stories that we read, but I think it's important also because it gives us a chance to talk about what does it mean when someone is different than us? How can we interact if someone's different than us? And that helps with tolerance, which they're going to need, that skill, to be able to accept other people for their entire lives.
PWCS is currently offering digital tools, bootcamps for parents, beginning tonight and continuing through the beginning of May. These informative classes are very helpful for parents in light of the virtual learning taking place due to the pandemic. The tools being covered in these bootcamps include Canvas, Zoom, NearPod, Flipgrid, Padlet, and Adobe Spark. The classes are available in multiple languages, and parents are encouraged to sign up through the Parents tab on the PWCS website at www.pwcs.edu. Although the pandemic has caused a majority of our teaching and learning to occur virtually, we are very proud to share that PWCS has managed to continue offering our robotics program this school year. Check out this video on how this program has flourished during the pandemic.
This robot has three motors.
In elementary school, we have VEX IQ and First Lego League. This is First Lego League. It is Lego parts. They build the robot and they program it onto a brick. In middle school, we are doing VEX. It is full-blown metal robotics building. And then in the high school, we're doing VEX, first tech challenge, first robotics competition, which is the 125-pound robot, and we're doing sea perch, which is underwater robotics.
We started by building our boards and just scheduling our regular meeting, and so it was understanding how to take this thing that's hands-on and do it in a safe way, but also give the kids the learning experience that they were looking for.
Me and my team meet over Zoom, and we divide the jobs by I am the programmer. We have two brothers on our team that keep the robot parts, and Ben at their house, they do the manual building. We have somebody doing CAD, which is basically an online version of our robot. We have two engineering notebook people that write down everything we do during the day and what problems we face. There's a hard copy and a PowerPoint presentation, and then we have somebody who just makes sure everything's aligned to help out with every job.
The neat thing that also came out of it was collaboration between schools. So my example would be Marshall Eaglebots and the Sudley Roadrunners meet together as a team. They learn together. They're looking at the game together.
Robotics is considered a sport and falls under Virginia High School League. Because Virginia High School League is allowing teams to start meeting now, then our robotics kids can start meeting now in groups of nine and 10.
Our school division and our coaches are excited to give the kids a season, no matter what it looks like.
The week before spring break, Dr. Walts had the opportunity to visit Enterprise Elementary School and Elementary School to talk to students and staff and participate in a video to be used for our outstanding educators ceremony, as well as our retirees ceremony. Both events are being held virtually this year as a result of the COVID-19 social gathering limit required by the state due to the pandemic. The outstanding educators ceremony will be aired for the first time on April 27, and the retirees ceremony will be aired May 11. Both will be streamed live on pwctv.com, or it can be viewed on Comcast Channel 18 or Verizon FiOS Channel 36. Both events will be available for viewing on demand on pwcs.com after they are first aired. Because of the pandemic, Virginia Code and authority granted by the General Assembly has required our school board agenda topics to be limited. Because of this limitation, we have temporarily suspended board resolutions to recognize and honor various observances. However, we do think it is important to mention these observances. This week is National Library Week and National Assistant Principals Week. We appreciate our many library media employees and assistant principals who work so hard to provide critical resources and support to our students and staff. As many of you saw when you arrived at the Kelly Leadership Center this evening, we have hundreds of blue pinwheels lining the walkways outside, and if we could bring the picture up, that would be great. These have been placed as part of the Pin Wheels for Prevention Campaign that is held each April to Recognize Child Abuse Prevention Month. These pinwheels are a visible show of support for keeping children and our PWCS community safe. Working together, we will create positive family situations and prevent child abuse. April also includes the following important observances: World Autism Month, Month of the Military Child, and National Occupational Therapy Month. And once again, on behalf of Dr. Walts and myself, thank you. Stay safe and healthy.
Thank you, Mr. Iman. We really appreciate it. Next, we'll go on to the update on the Prince William County Racial and Social Justice Commission with Ms. Lori Williams. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since our last school board meeting, the Racial and Social Justice Commission has initiated subcommittees, or I guess committees, because the commission itself. So on this past Monday, April 5, the working session for the Education Commission, Education Committee, excuse me, met at 6:30. It was the first of, I'm sure, many to come committee sessions. So basically, it was just framework was provided, things that we'd like to look at, discuss, how we'd like to move forward in the future. All meeting minutes will be publicly posted on the Racial and Social Justice Commission's website. A few meetings worth note, Monday, April 12, will be the working session for Government Services Committee, and that's also 6:30. Monday, April 26, will be the working session for the Policing Committee at 6:30 again. And then on Thursday, April 15, at 6:30, will be the main meeting, again, for the commission as a whole, to discuss issues. So I hope everyone will stay tuned, and any information you need and further detail regarding the commission can be found on the pwgov.org website under the Human Rights Commission page. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Great, Ms. Williams. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is on for information at the request of Ms. Jessie and Ms. Williams. This is our update on the work of the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity, including the Equity Scorecard. I guess I'll turn that over to Mr. Iman.
That would be correct. Thank you. Good evening, once again, Chairman Latif, Vice Chairman Zargarpur, and members of the school board. I also want to welcome any of our members serving on the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity who have joined us tonight, either in person or virtually. We are pleased tonight to provide the school board with an update on the work of the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity at Ms. Williams' request, along with an introduction to the latest PWCS Equity Scorecard at Ms. Jessie's request. You will see an emphasis on the impact of the work of this advisory council has had on the school division. Everything from how equity is embedded throughout our planning and implementation of the work we do each and every day, using our equity lens, to the development of the Funding Year '22 budget, to the influence on the new strategic plan, to the impact on the contents of the Equity Scorecard, and to the development of a formal PWCS equity statement. All of this work began with the Advisory Council's adoption of two priorities, the 2020 school year, which guided all of this important work. I'll now turn this presentation over to our advisory council facilitator, Mrs. Carolyn Custard. Carolyn.
Thank you, Mr. Iman. Next slide, please.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, school board members, and Dr. Walts and his accents. It is my pleasure to provide an update on the continued work of SAEZ, the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity. SAEZ has identified many important priorities. These priorities have guided the work of the school division for this past school year. Priorities have focused on access to high instructional needs for all students, ongoing resources, programs, learning opportunities, and staff to support those students who are failing or falling behind. Staff is utilized in creative and innovative ways to ensure that all students are provided multiple and supplemental opportunities for instruction and for learning. Next slide, please. The equity lens to be used in decision-making was recommended by SAEZ and has been adopted by Prince William County Schools. The equity lens is continuously shared and is embedded in the daily work of all Prince William County School staff. Currently, all policies, regulations, and guidelines are reviewed with an equity lens and edits will be done as needed. Additionally, Mr. Iman, Dr. Casada, and I have been requested by the Prince William County Office of Economic Development to attend a meeting on April 15 with Christina Nguyen, Sherri Johnson, and Maria Burgos to discuss a survey regarding branding and messaging. This ensures a collaborative effort of equity and inclusive practices for all Prince William County stakeholders. And additionally, this continues our emphasis on the importance of positive outcomes that will occur when schools, parents, and communities connect and engage as assets of learning. And at this time, Mrs. Teedner will provide additional information about how our school division is embedding the equity lens in the work that we do daily in Prince William County Schools. Ms. Teedner?
Thank you, Mrs. Custard. Good evening, Dr. Latif, members of the school board, and Mr. Deputy Iman. I appreciate the opportunity to share just a few examples of how we've implemented and utilized the recommended equity lens. Using an equity lens during decision-making is key to ensuring that all of our students' needs are met and are successful. As the slide outlines, ultimately, the goal is to have our work, the lens, embedded in the work that we do each day. But just a few examples. At our senior staff level, the tool has been embedded into our planning and our meeting agenda so that when we bring an item forward for discussion, we're going through the process and looking at it comprehensively to ensure that equity is a part of our decision-making and our discussion. All members of our team review and submit in writing the aspects of the lens for the team to consider when they're bringing forward the agenda item. This includes development and refinement of regulations, policies, as well as our day-to-day practices. Our school leaders have been provided the tool for use at the school level, and it's a valuable tool for our leadership teams and advisory councils. The creation of the graphic serves as a visual resource and reminder for leaders that we strive in equity in all that we do. The lens requires us to ask and consider data. It requires that we consider the impact of decisions, not just on student achievement, but on opportunity and school climate as well. It demands that culturally responsive leaders recognize that there are disparity gaps and determine why they exist. The process ensures that we consider what stakeholders need to be present in the discussion and reviews how disparities may be mitigated. It serves as a written reminder that--
Teedner?
Yes?
Let me interrupt for just a moment, only to ask, because you're referring to the graphic, if we could back the slide up one, I think that would be good.
So, Mr. Iman--
If you'll excuse the interruption.
That's okay. I may be seeing something different than what you're seeing. We're currently seeing the impact of, with the graphic off to the right.
My apologies. And on the home screen, it was showing the next slide. I apologize.
No worries, no worries. So the process ensures that we consider what stakeholders need to be present in the discussion, and it reviews how disparities may be mitigated. It serves as a written reminder that disparities must be mitigated. This work is powerful and it's necessary to ensure excellence for all of our students. Our committee is grateful to Mrs. Custard for her work on behalf of Prince William County Schools, and mostly recently for her participation in professional development around equity during the month of March. In discussion with Mrs. Custard and our planning team, we were pleased to note that many of the first steps that we've taken align with the vision of the very recently released new resources from Virginia Department of Education with a focus on the five Cs that promote equity: continuous reflection, compassionate student and family engagement, cultural responsiveness, curriculum reframing, and courageous leadership. The new VDOE resources include an equity audit that will be helpful in guiding the work of our committee and our schools in the future. As I mentioned, many of our aspects of our previous work, or should I say our initial steps, are in alignment with a courageous leadership that calls for our leaders to understand that our differences are our greatest strength. It calls for us to lead with a lens that is culturally competent and equity-oriented. No exceptions. This must happen at all times. So I'd like to highlight just a few of these examples. Please note that these are just a few specific examples and not a comprehensive review of all of the aspects of our work. Under the leadership of Dara Duggar, Director of OSMAP, with support from Dina Scanlon, our Title IX and Student Equity Officer, our Code of Behavior Task Force has taken the equity lens and used it to evaluate the code of behavior for bias related to gender, race, ethnicity, culture, and disability. As you heard during our Language Arts Textbook Committee presentation, the committee thoughtfully selected materials that ensured and reflected our diverse racial, ethnic, language, religious, and gender groups. Our division leaders continue to implement the use of the equity lens as we work to make decisions that we can work and to work to identify disproportionate representation in all programs and services based on race, language, and ability. We're acting to disseminate racist beliefs and structures and allocate resources to support equity goals. And at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation back over to Mr. Iman. Thank you.
Now, if we could see Slide 4, that would be great. Thank you. In light of the pandemic, the advisory council's adopted priorities and the use of the equity lens were prominent in the superintendent's thinking when both adjusting spending for the current school year and developing the Funding Year '22, or next year's school budget, which has now been presented, has been adopted by the school board and presented to the Board of County Supervisors. On Slide 4, in the current fiscal year, using advisory council's identified priorities, things included on this slide and many others were adjustments made during the fiscal year spending. Things for technology, support for student mental health, support for school operations during the pandemic, purchases of PPE, and the implementation of many additional academic sports. Next slide, please. In the development of next year's school budget, FY '22, once again, those priorities were prominent in the thinking of the superintendent and the staff and the budget that was presented to the board and adopted by the board. Things associated with those priorities included specialized education replacement funding, supplemental summer school programming for students to provide the additional support needed following this pandemic year of instruction, a division-wide purchase and implementation of language arts textbooks, increased funding for economically disadvantaged students at our schools, and additional translations funding. Next slide. Also in next year's school budget, funding to support Title IX, equity in student activities and programming resources and facilities, and some additional staffing to help with our efforts around equity. Chief among those is the Chief Equity Officer. But as you all know as board members, there were discussions on a number of you on positions that were seen to be needed, including such things as additional technology support to provide equity at all of our schools, the increased numbers of technology in our schools. We also included 11 additional pre-K classrooms in next year's school budget. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Custard.
Thank you, sir. Next slide, please. It has been my honor to serve as the facilitator of SAEZ this year. The council is composed of an amazing group of individuals who are truly committed and dedicated. And we are especially excited to have a student, Caroline Rivera, as a member of the council who represents our students. I had the pleasure of working with a SAEZ subcommittee on the development of our Prince William County Schools Equity Statement. The subcommittee members were Dr. Kate Olson Flynn, Lynn Cologne, India Daniels, Gloria Jordan, Maria Ramagon, Tanisha Holland, Denise Teedner, and Kristy Taylor. After much thought and discussion of our school division, we completed our recommendation and presented it to the entire council at our March meeting. It was approved by all members and will be shared by Mr. Iman to the superintendent's staff in April and then with the school board for approval. The work of SAEZ connects nicely to the new strategic plan, which has equity embedded throughout the plan and is identified as a core value for Prince William County Schools. Most notably is the learning and achievement for all things, but certainly equity appears throughout all of the things. The indicators of success focus on equity in terms of outcomes, access, opportunities, and resources, which we all know are critical. SAEZ provided valuable insight into what Prince William County Schools should consider in our Equity Scorecard, and they are the first audience each year to discuss the scorecard. Their discussion and great questions will lead to the inclusion of additional data ports. And at this time, I turn the presentation over to Mr. Iman, who will share additional information about the Equity Scorecard, and then introduce Dr. Jennifer Casada.
Thank you, Mrs. Custard. And to keep, I do, oops, my apologies. Before we move to Dr. Casada, the overview of the latest PWCS Equity Scorecard, please allow me to set the stage. The Equity Scorecard webpage is designed to provide a wealth of information grouped by category and section. Dr. Casada will highlight what is available and provide some examples. Her presentation has active links to the various sections of the scorecard, and she will demonstrate accessing some of them. Dr. Casada is prepared to answer questions about specific charts, but it would take well over an hour, if not longer, to go through all of the more than 100 charts that make up the scorecard during the board meeting. Therefore, based on the agenda planning meeting with the board officers, it is not our plan to go into all of them, but instead to demonstrate how they can all be explored. I do ask that you wait to ask questions until Dr. Casada has finished. And to please keep in mind, our discussion tonight is intended to be about the makeup and layout of the scorecard and how to use it, and not about the steps being taken to address improvement opportunities. It is our request that the school board members write those kinds of questions down and submit them to me so that they can be answered, much like we have done with pandemic-related questions. In fact, we will also set up individual meetings with board members and the appropriate staff to discuss the responses to detailed questions. It's now my pleasure to turn the presentation over to Dr. Casada. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mr. Iman. Good evening, Chairman Latif, school board members, and Mr. Iman. I'm honored to be with you tonight to share the PWCS Equity Scorecard with you and the public. You will notice I'm presenting from my office. This is because during my presentation, I will leave the PowerPoint and show you the Equity Scorecard website as Mr. Iman described and how you and the public can access the data. Please note that the presentation that is posted in Board Docs has live links to the various components of the Equity Scorecard webpage. We encourage everyone to take a look. So last year, we just shared the Equity Scorecard with you for the first time before we had the webpage developed. And this year, thanks to the collaborative efforts of my staff, most notably Marissa Escara and Patrice Barnes, as well as staff in the Office of Communication Services, most especially Carla Tildner, we have over 80 data charts included for easy access and more coming, up to the 100 Mr. Iman was describing. I'm going to highlight what we have available on the webpage and share some examples of the data charts. Don't worry, I'm not walking through all of them, but there's a wealth of information available in this scorecard, and we continue to consider additional analyses to conduct and display. So what is the Equity Scorecard? It's a graphical representation of PWCS data in a variety of categories using an equity lens. Data, including in the areas of enrollment, performance, program participation, and discipline, are shown disaggregated by variables such as race, ethnicity, economic status, English learner status, disability status, and sometimes gender to show gaps. In addition, as a result of input from the SAEZ council, additional data about teachers and some resources, including computers and things like trailers comparing Title I and non-Title I schools, are also presented. And as a reminder, a good amount of additional information about performance at the school level can be found on both the Virginia Department of Education's school data profiles, as well as the PWCS school data profiles. Links to where both of these can be accessed are included at the end of this presentation. As I mentioned, the Equity Scorecard includes data in a variety of areas. The links on this slide represent those areas. I also mentioned over 80 charts are currently included with more to come next year. For the next part of the presentation, I'm going to go to each section of the scorecard to show you what is available, and then I will discuss some specific examples. This section of the Equity Scorecard provides basic demographic information about students and staff in PWCS, hence called student and staff demographics. Student enrollment over time is shown by ethnicity, economic status, English learner status, and disability status. When you see the dark blue bars and you click on one, it opens up below to show a data chart and text explaining that chart. I'm going to show you an example now. As an example on this page, the staff diversity, minority and non-minority graph shows the breakdown of staff for administrators, instructional staff, and all staff, comparing the proportions that are minority and non-minority over the past three years. In response to questions from SAEZ members when we discussed this at the last meeting, additional elements related to staff characteristics are being considered for future scorecards. As a reminder, there were no updates in, the next section of the scorecard, I'm sorry, is assessments. And as a reminder, there were no updates in terms of SOL data since the last time we discussed this, as the SOL tests were not administered in the spring of 2020 due to the pandemic. Those tests are being administered this spring, so these charts will be updated once we have all the data. You will see that there is a statement about the reason there are no SOL scores for 2019-20, but for what we do have, they're grouped by subject area. Within each subject area, results are shown by ethnicity and student group for both overall pass rates and pass advanced rates. Again, each blue bar can be clicked on to show the resulting, the resulting chart, along with text explaining the data in the chart. I'm going to show you an example using reading by ethnicity. This graph shows performance by ethnic group for three years. Again, remember, this ends through 2018-19 because there were no SOL reading tests given in 2019-20. As another example, we have pass advanced rates by ethnicity for the same time period. What we've been showing so far has been four major racial, ethnic groups, Asian, Black, Hispanic, and White. We will be adding for future presentations, the category of two or more races, because that's now required reporting for the state of Virginia. So to be consistent, we'll be including those. So parallel graphs are included for each content area. I will discuss the student group charts and visual representations of gaps themselves later in the presentation. The third section of the Equity Scorecard focuses on college and career readiness. Over time, the measures in this section will expand also. So what's included now includes things like performance of students on advanced exams such as AP, IB, and Cambridge, as are both participation and performance of students on the SAT and ACT. In addition to exam performance, graduation rates, advanced diploma percentages, and dropout rates are also included. One interesting thing on this page is we have some charts that present the data in five-year increments, in addition to just annual trends. So I'm going to show you that one as an example, a closer look. Oops. Sorry, didn't do the right thing. Hold on a second. I'm going the wrong way. Hold on, my apologies. Back to that. Sorry. All great things. Okay, so percent of graduates earning qualifying score by ethnicity in five-year increments, this shows you a comparison over time, looking at data from 2009-10, 2014-15, and 2019-20, just to show you a different look at the data because sometimes year-to-year trends don't tell the whole story. Okay. The next slide shows you program participation. This is a section that includes data about participation in gifted programs by level, elementary, middle, and high school, both annual trends and the five-year increments as we just discussed. Plus, at the middle and high, at the high school level, there's CTE participation and advanced course participation at the high school level. Identification for special education is also included. Note for program participation measures, gender is also included. And now I've solved my problem here. Again, sorry for the technical challenges. The graph I'm going to show you now is the percent of students identified for special education by gender, just as a different look. So also, one thing to point out, in addition to the graphs themselves, there's text describing what's in the charts. We've worked with communications to do this to ensure accessibility, and the communications office has been absolutely fantastic at working with us on that. So what this graph shows you for the past three years is the identified students for special education services by gender. You will see that a higher proportion of male students are identified than female students. The little yellow outlined box that you see represents the amount of the gap in percentage points, and I will explain that just a bit more in a little bit. Finally, the last section of the Equity Scorecard is the Learning Climate page. This page includes the largest number of graphs. Future iterations may break this page into multiple components. Our hope is to be able to include some satisfaction data in the future also by different groups. So the first area of focus in Learning Climate is discipline. Data are presented by, at the division level as well as separately for elementary, middle, and high school. Comparisons are included by ethnicity, student group, and gender. And data are presented in terms of discipline referrals as well as exclusionary discipline. I'm going to show you an example of exclusionary discipline by ethnicity at the division level. This presentation shows the breakdown of this with the percent of students within each group with suspension, short and long-term suspensions over the past three years. Again, this information can be seen for each level as well as by student group and by gender. In addition to discipline data, this page includes presentations of teacher quality as defined by the state in terms of years of experience and teachers teaching outside their field. The data are presented comparing Title I and non-Title I schools, and they also compare Prince William County to the state. In addition, we've got charts showing teacher education level and teacher retention both for Title I and non-Title I schools. Data about some resources, including computers per 100 students and trailers are included. It's important to note that the data shown are for the end of 2019-20. The computer data, for example, will obviously look much different after this current school year based on the additional resources that Mr. Iman talked about that have been provided by both the board and the federal funding. For the remainder of the presentation, I'm going to discuss a few of the data charts as examples. This slide includes three charts. The one on the left shows student enrollment in Prince William County Schools for the past three years. It's important to note, for this one slide only, it includes 2020, 2021. Official fall membership data, which is that ever-important September 30th date, are used to be consistent with what the state shows. The outermost circle represents the current year. Just to highlight something, you can see that the proportion of Hispanic students in Prince William County Schools has increased slightly over time with the proportion of white students decreasing slowly, decreasing slightly over that same time period. The two charts on the right show enrollment over the same time periods but for English learners in the lighter blue compared to native English speakers. And then on the, one on the bottom is economically disadvantaged students compared to those students who are not identified as such. So you'll see the trends over time for those as well. This chart is another example from the Student and Staff Demographics page. We're including it because this was something of interest in particular to the committee members. It compares staff and student breakdowns. You can see the darker blue sections of the bars show the proportions of staff and students that are minorities, and you can see how those have changed over time and compare to one another. I mentioned earlier that many of the data charts, most notably in performance and program participation, include visual gap representations. When a single group is compared to another group, for example, English learners and native English speakers, we've overlaid the bar chart with a yellow outlined box that shows you the size of the gap in percentage points. This is just a visual representation so you can see how those size of the gap may have changed over time. The types of groups that we compare are included on this, on this table, on this slide, just to show you how groups are compared to one another and to overall. Here are some examples of gaps. I showed you one earlier for gender, for students identified for special education. This slide shows you two examples. First, on the left, the chart shows you students identified for special education by student group, meaning by economic status and by English learner status. You can see that the gaps for both sets of comparisons have been pretty stable, about two to three percentage points over time between disadvantaged and non-disadvantaged students, those are the ones on the far left, and then English learners and native English speakers in the set of right bars. The chart on the right looks at exclusionary discipline by student group. A quick glance, if you notice the set of bars in the middle, that's comparing English learners and native speakers, you'll see that there were no, no gaps between those two groups in terms of exclusionary discipline. However, you do see gaps by economic status, those are the bars on the left of that chart, and disability status by the, those are the bars on the right. The good news is that those gaps are getting smaller, but the other news is that they're still there and there's work to be done. Remember that these data are further broken down by level, elementary, middle, and high school on the scorecard page. I have two more data slides for you. This one shows us some graduation-related data by ethnicity. The chart on the left shows on-time graduation rates for the past three years by ethnicity. You can see that all groups except Hispanic students had graduation rates over 95% last year. And then the chart on the right looks at advanced diploma attainment by ethnicity. A quick glance here shows you that lower percentages of our Black and Hispanic students have received advanced diplomas than our white and Asian students. And then the final data slide for right now includes information about teachers, as I mentioned earlier. Again, our Stays members asked lots of questions related to teachers and led to the inclusion of these metrics in the scorecard and will help shape future data presentations. Here, the chart on the left shows teacher retention at Title I and non-Title I schools. You will see that teacher retention is higher at non-Title I schools, a pattern that is not unique to Prince William County. And then the chart on the right parallels one produced by VDOE. This one shows a comparison of PWCS to the state for both Title I and non-Title I schools in terms of a couple of different things. First, the proportion of teachers who are teaching outside their field, that's the lightest blue. Teachers who are inexperienced, that's the medium blue, and teachers that would be both. It's important to note that the scale on this chart only goes up to 10%, so you can see the differences. Also note, PWCS has lower proportions of teachers teaching outside their fields as well as those who are inexperienced than state, inexperienced, I'm sorry, than state averages. Title I schools, both in PWCS and the state as a whole, have higher proportions of these teachers than non-Title I schools. So the last few slides are included as resources to remind people of the other data presentations at the school level that are available. First, PWCS has produced for upwards of 20 years annual school data profiles that include information on performance, student and staff characteristics, stakeholder satisfaction, and program participation. This slide just includes an example from Minneville Elementary School. High school profiles also include graduation and other high school-specific data. Prince William County School data profiles are available from the main PWCS website for each school as well as summaries by level, elementary, middle, and high. And as I've mentioned a few times earlier, VDOE also publishes their own school quality profiles. These are really useful if someone is interested in data on a particular school and especially on how that school compares to either the division as a whole and/or the state. The link that's on this slide takes you to the PWCS overall report from which you can access the school reports. It is important also to note that in our Equity Scorecard, in our school data profiles, we don't replicate everything from the state because they do a really good job of providing some data by the school level, and we make sure to link on our data profiles as well as our Equity Scorecard page to these VDOE resources. Thank you also very much for the opportunity to showcase this evolving Equity Scorecard and data presentation, and thank you to school board members for their interest in driving this over the past several years. I would like to conclude by again thanking the Stays members for their wonderful questions and insights. Each year, they've been the first to discuss this scorecard, and the work of Stays will drive what's included here each year. Scorecard is a way for PWCS to share and reflect on where we are as a school division with respect to equity in terms of outcomes, opportunities, and resources, and help provide insight for setting priorities and keeping with the focus on equity. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Casada. And I hope that the board was able to see the connection between the work of the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity and the work being done across our school division and the impact on things like the Equity Scorecard. With that, Dr. Latif, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Iman. At this point, we'll ask the board if they have any questions. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Chairman Latif. I first want to start by saying thank you for this presentation, both that reflects the Superintendent's Council and on the Equity Scorecard. Personally, I have been asking for months to receive updated information with regards to the Equity Scorecard. I know we had received information periodically on the Superintendent's Council. I'm definitely excited to hear more about the formalization of the Prince William County Schools Equity Statement that will come out of the council. From what I understand, it's pretty exciting, so looking forward to hearing more about that. And I just want to congratulate everyone who's working on that council. I have been told that it's been developing very well and that it got off to a bumpy start, but people are generally much more pleased with its participation. As far as the Equity Scorecard goes, Dr. Casada, wonderful presentation. I am overly thrilled with the fact that all of this information is on our website and is publicly available. And when you click on the links, they're easily, excuse me, easily digestible, which I think is really important because I don't remember in our school's history being able to present data in this, such a diverse way and so easily digestible under this topic. But however, ultimately, the only reason why I wanted an update on the Equity Scorecard is to know what we were doing with regards to the information that we had, what the school division, what, not necessarily policies, but progress, what steps we were taking, how we were addressing things like the achievement gap or hiring of new staff, more diverse staff. You know, if there was an update of that nature, maybe my request was misinterpreted, but I think most of us on the board are pretty familiar with this information. I'm definitely biased because I hawk on this all the time, so I may be the most familiar on the board, and I'm willing to, to take that and say, you know, maybe I'm being a little bit more aggressive about my request, but it has been months long, and I understand too during COVID, we haven't been able to do as much as we would like to do just simply because of the restrictions put on us for our meetings because our main priority was simply having students in buildings, our safety and security of our students and then the rest of our families and our staff. And so there were much bigger things at play immediately when we pivoted because of COVID. But I would like to know more about what steps the division is taking to address these issues that we finally had presented to us in a nice, clean, easily digestible manner that really provided a foundation for what a lot of us knew was already occurring. But we just didn't have the data compiled in a way to say, this is what it looks like. This is the picture. And now that we're at the point where the school year is almost ending and we are going to have a new administration come in, I think it's even more imperative that we address publicly what we have been doing, what we think we may do in the future, not only for the public, but also sort of in a transitional sense, right? If we have a new administration coming in, if we're very transparent about what actions and what steps we've been undertaking, I think it makes it so much better for the new administration because they're coming in on a more knowledgeable basis. If they want to shift direction or whatever, they'll have that opportunity to do so. And also for the members of the public who are interested in the subject matter, you know, they may want to volunteer next year and sit on a committee or provide feedback for the school division. So I very much appreciate this update. Dr. Casada, you did a great job of running us through, and also the public, on how to access this data, where, you know, where it is, what it looks like. I do think that that is very important when we talk about this subject matter, that we're all informed, so I do appreciate that. But I was very, I would have much rather heard personally, right, what steps we were doing to just, to address some of the issues that arose from having an Equity Scorecard. But I think this is an important presentation as well, so thank you.
Ms. Jessie?
Good evening. I think there's been a miscommunication on my part perhaps because when Dr. Burco's...
Ms. Jessie, can you just speak into the mic, moving a little closer?
I'm sorry, I need to get closer to the mic. When Dr. Maria Burco's made the presentation, I asked for an Equity Report Card, report. And I talked to Mr. Iman about an Equity Report Card report. And why this is important to me is that when I came on this board, my focus has always been student learning and high levels of student learning. And so, you know, in 2016, Mrs. Hart, Mrs. Ralston, and I went to Roanoke, Virginia to see the first Equity Report Card. We brought it back to Prince William. And for me, it's all about learning. When Dr. Burco's made her presentation, the term equity lens and cultural diversity and cultural competence, at the end of the day, is all about whether or not student learning is taking place. And I'm asking you to be patient with me because this is very personal to me in terms of my own personal growth as an individual. And I've seen high levels of learning for me personally. I've seen high levels of learning in schools and in the Title I program that I was off giving the opportunity to supervise. So that's been my focus, and it's been the focus of other members of this board. So I think we're all on the same page, but for me, it's very, very personal. And I did not expect this very summarized report, Dr., Mr. Iman. And if there was a change in the report, I, I, I wish I had been called because I would have asked for a little bit more data. But you know that everything that Dr. Casada does, I'm always praising, but she knows that I come with the questions, that I'm always going to ask the hard questions. Are kids really learning? And when I look at this report that you gave tonight, I think this is the second time that we've been told you can go to other sources to get more information, you can meet with us. But I have to tell you, I'm disappointed in the scope of this report tonight. But that's something that we can deal with down the road. I would, Mrs. Casada, could you, do you have? I'm just going to refer to two slides because I've been asked by community groups. Please know that the minority community is very concerned about the gaps. And I've made presentations to them and because they are very concerned about student learning when it comes to African-American students, when it comes to students, all minority students, and when the gap is taking place. And it's not just the African-American community, but all of us. We're all concerned about high levels of learning and not just for meeting the goals, but in advanced placement. Do you happen to have information on what was Slide 17 of your report on advanced exam performance? If you don't have it, I can just read it. I brought it with me.
So on slide, the, the number of the slide is confusing me, Ms. Jessie. We have, the Equity Scorecard has advanced, advanced exam performance and has advanced pass rate performance by every possible breakdown, so...
I'll just share with you that as we look down the road, you know, I've been on this board for seven years and I've just, I'm at a point where I'm just trying to share with you where I see for me personally, I think other members of the board share this. you where I see for me personally, I think other members of the board share this, but when we look at Slide 17 in your report that you gave to us, we see that the percentage of students earning qualifying scores in advanced placement, African-American students in 2016, 22% versus 52% for Asian kids and 46% for white. In 2017, we're at 24%, by 2019, only 21%. That's the kind of data that I think I was hoping we would get tonight. I was hoping we'd at least get, I know you showed a slide on reading, but it wasn't in my packet, on where we were in reading in terms of the gap. And in Slide 28, we talk about gifted education. So for me, it's not just about passing or world-class performance has to mean that we're concerned about our kids in gifted ed and advanced placement. So in Slide 28 of the report that you gave to us earlier, you will see that I'd like the Equity Committee to look, to look at, I think Ms. Williams said, what are we going to do about these gaps? Because the gaps are, in my view, when I look at the trend data, we're pretty much flatlining in terms of the percentage of students in elementary gifted programs. When we look at our ELL and economically disadvantaged students, we're looking at a 10% participation rate compared to other students. So those are the kinds of things that I would like to see us down the road look at. I know that we're going to be going through a transition. And I, for me, I'm also looking at this culture diversity, the culture competency, and this lens that we look at, the lens. And I think there was a slide where you talked about what you guys are looking at as a lens. Down the road, we really need to talk about what we're going to do about it. I think I'm correct that Mr. Iman, the last time we made this presentation on the scorecard and on the strategic plan, he said, we're not going to discuss what we're going to do about it. And I think Ms. Williams said it, and I'm saying it tonight, too. I expect us to talk about what we're going to do about it. Are we going to change our practices? When we look at best practices, are we going to be looking at the meta-analysis? Are we going to be looking at John Hattie's work or Marzano's work? And how are we going to change our practices? And I guess, I just feel badly because I didn't want to be the Debbie Downer this evening, but it's been seven years, and I am just not pleased with where we talk about what are we, what are we going to do in terms of changing our practices? Not adding staff, not adding money, what are we going to do differently to change this, what looks like trend data for not just minority students, but all those subgroups that we're looking at? So in closing, I want to thank Dr. Walts. I want to thank Mr. Iman. I want to thank all of you in instructional portions of this, this administration. But during the, during our search for superintendent, one of my questions, of course, is what does world-class really mean? And if world-class, world-class has to mean that we're looking at higher levels of learning, which means, in closing, we have to share the good, the bad, and the ugly. And when I look, you know, in your data profile, you chose Minneville. And Minneville is wonderful, they're doing wonderful things, but it's not really the representational sample of where we are. And I'm just, again, I'm repeating myself because it's very emotional for me. We have got to look at where we are and what are we going to do about it? So to the superintendent's staff, as we look down the road, I'm going to be back, I'm going to be asking the same question. And the question is, how are we going to close these gaps other than just adding personnel? We've got to change our practices, and I would like to see that. And to Mr. Iman, I'm sorry there was a miscommunication tonight for me, but for me, I asked for this Equity Report Card, and if it was going to be downplayed to this 18-slide presentation, I know you have your hand up, but I, I made the request, and if you're going to modify it, I would have appreciated being contacted to let me know that you were going to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Iman?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Yeah, I just wanted to address a couple of quick things to Ms. Williams and Ms. Jessie's comments. Tonight's effort is to provide the latest data on the scorecard that's only been just updated and was provided to the Equity Council. And at their next meeting, they're going to look, in other words, just as we presented to the board tonight, to give you time to explore all of that, because to go through every slide in detail tonight would take all evening. This way, you have a chance to look at the data. We've presented the good, the bad, and the ugly. All the data is there. If you, as, as individual board members, can take a look at the areas that you'd like us to explore first and to do follow-up, and if you provide that to us, we can respond appropriately, in writing, be it publicly or both. And we've offered to meet with individual board members to discuss those questions that they may have. So, and again, not to be, to debate the interpretation, but the data has to be, has to be presented in a format that you understand how to go after it. Take a look at the things that are of your highest interest, and we're happy to respond. And so I just want to be real clear that the issues that you're presenting, and I can go back and play the tape from tonight's meeting to find the issues you've identified, but it'd be preferred to me that if I got those in writing, we can take specific looks at those first, much like we're going to do with the Advisory Council when we meet again. They'll provide us with their input, and we'll take a look at those areas. One of the ones that they told us immediately was they wanted to look at hiring practices and what we're doing, so we're going to explore that with the council, among other things. So we're open to doing what you both are asking for. It's a step process because there's so much data there.
Mr. Iman, there has to be a point in time where we deal with, as a school system, what are we going to do differently? And I just think that down the road, that's going to be the issue for many members of this board. And I know I don't speak for myself. What are we going to do in terms of changing our practices? And I don't know what that's going to look like because we have a new superintendent coming in, but until we look at what are we going to do differently, we're going to have this trend data that seems to not change very rapidly, but that's the issue. The issue is, what are we going to do differently? And I'm sorry, maybe you and I miscommunicated because I wanted a more, I don't see any new data in here because I've gone back and looked at your other, the report that you gave to me the last time. I guess one question I will ask, do you have any new data? What are we looking at now? Where are we in terms of our, where do you see us in terms of our, are you looking at formative data? What are you, what are we going to be looking at in terms of where we are now compared to where we were at the beginning of the school year? And I know it's very difficult. What new data are we going to be looking at?
I don't, Dr. Casada, I don't know if you want to address the new data, so to speak. What I will say, Mrs. Jessie, is, is that the Equity Scorecard has been, after going to the Advisory Council, Dr. Casada has worked with our associates and me, too, are utilizing that data to work with their school teams in order to make those changes that you're asking about. Dr. Casada, I don't know if you have any follow-up?
Sure, just, just, just a minute, and Mrs. Jessie, thank you as always for questions in terms of, so the Equity Scorecard itself is the division look, right? And so it's, it's the most up-to-date information we have in terms of big-picture measures. You asked about formative and process metrics, and so the schools look at, you've heard throughout the course of this year at presentations when principals have been here for the various things that they're, they're looking at in terms of performance on their own formative assessments in reading and math and other subject areas, and then through their individual, you know, instruction with students. But in terms of what we're looking at from my office at the division level, we look big-picture division-wise. You're going to be getting subsequent updates as in response to the questions that many of you asked at the last meeting. There will be periodic reporting of as much ongoing data in terms of elementary reading, for example, grades. We just finished the third marking period, so there'll be updates on that. So from my perspective, I can say that, but I know that my colleagues, the Level Associates, Mrs. Goss, Mrs. Hevner, and principals and directors and supervisors are working all together to look at the, everything from unit assessment data to Lexia data, to all sorts of different, different things along the way at the individual student, the classroom, and the school level. What this Equity Scorecard so far has been is, been that division look. And as I mentioned, what's tricky is we didn't have some of the updates, as I said, we didn't have SOL tests last year, so we didn't have some of our division performance metrics for the end of last year. When we have those this year, I mean, that's coming up on us rapidly, when we'll have that and we look at it first overall, and then we'll do these same breakdowns. And as the new, new and evolving measures and more consistent metrics for assessment across schools, we're working actively with everyone to try and include that. So I'm not sure, that's what I can speak to because my role is to look at it at the division perspective, but the, the scorecard is kind of still a big picture, but looking at it, what's different from how we've shared things like with the strategic plan report and everything before is it, it's focused on the comparisons of gaps, which I know is of interest to everyone, and just shows those different things. And each time we identify gaps, I know that at the next council meeting, they'll have questions, and that'll lead to their recommendations for things to focus on in the subsequent year. Their first thing, as Mr. Iman mentioned, was related to teacher hiring, but they're going to digest the other data. Some of the focus last year was on the discipline piece, so we vamped that up. So I'm not sure, I'm going to stop now because I feel like I'm rambling a little bit.
Thank you. I, I think that, I guess the best way to say it is this, there are people, this system is not in a category where we do not collect data at all. We do, and we share data. At the school level, I think we do some responding to data, but as a board, I have not, in my seven years of being on this board, seen a response to the data. When I looked at the strategic plan, it said, look at, when there were gaps, if you notice, you remember Jennifer, you had a little arrow at the bottom, you said it'll be on the report card, on this Equity Report Card. The Equity Report Card comes out, and Equity Report Card, we don't talk about what are we going to do about this. It's a simple question to me. At some point, there's got to be a point where we say, this is the data, this is where we're doing great, this is where we're not doing so great, and here where we need to improve, and this is what we're planning to do to specifically respond to those gaps. That's all I'm asking. And to be honest with you, I know you and I have been down this road, and you and I have shared data, and I admire your work, but I'm just, I, I want to know what we're going to do differently. And somewhere in the next, I guess, next school year as we're coming, I want to know what are we going to do differently based on the data that we have collected. That's all I'm asking. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. I have a quick question, you know, and sort of to add on to what Ms. Jessie, Ms. Williams asked, but, you know, we, we got a report a few weeks ago on second-quarter grades, and, you know, obviously, this year's metrics will have an effect on our overall metrics as we look back on this year. And, and the idea of what Ms. Jessie and Ms. Williams are talking about are what are we doing about it now? So the question I would have is, you know, as we announced today, the idea that parents can request to go in four days, I would like some clarification on this quote, "request", and for example, if we have, I'm looking at the data, yeah, yeah, so this has to do with equity, it's grades and equity. So, so I'm looking at the grades, which will go into the Equity Report Card, and for example, in mathematics, we have some extremely high fail rates for second quarter. I don't have to read them here, but, but many of you have seen the data. So, so an example of how are we addressing equity? How are we addressing improving, improving our students' success? PALS data we talked about, is there an effort by our schools and our folks, I know we've talked about, okay, we're going to do this tutoring, and we're going to do this, is there an effort to call those families and those students, say, hey, you're struggling, we know you're struggling, we want you to come in four days? Or what can we do to help you? What efforts are actively being done right now while we're in the midst of this pandemic to help address this that will play into our Equity Scorecard? Do we have anyone who can answer that, or Mr. Iman?
Well, Dr. Latif, what I will say is, yes, schools are working proactively, both in response to parent questions and concerns and reaching out to families with kids that they have concerns about. Perhaps some of our, and what I would also like to, to say as well, in terms of all those activities that are going on this year to support our students, as you've heard up until this meeting, we've had principals attending all year long, talking about the activities and the efforts that they are making at, at their schools to do, to do just that. But perhaps one of our Level Associates could address that, and perhaps Dr. Hart, you might be able to speak on behalf of your colleagues at the elementary.
So, you know, actually, why don't, because I, so that's great, Mr. Iman, just before we get into this whole thing, my, my actually concerns right now, I did ask about the elementary grades, that's true, but I'm looking at the high school math scores, which grades were troublesome, but, but sure, if anyone can talk about what we're doing here to address this in an active way, that can help maybe, I know Ms. Jessie's talking about long-term, but these numbers right now are going to affect what this Equity Scorecard looks like next year when we're sitting here. And we're going to sit back and say, well, it was the pandemic, it was this time, this is what, we couldn't do anything. We have a chance right now to do something. What are we doing? So anyone, I guess you can take, anyone can answer that. I don't, it could be elementary, it could be middle, it could be high, whoever wants.
Well, Dr. Latif, if your focus is high school, perhaps Mr. Mulgrew can assist.
Sure, that'd be great.
But again, what I would say is, you've heard some examples specifically of what's being done all year long at our meetings with principals, talking about the efforts at their schools. But Mr. Mulgrew, if you'd like to address high school specifically, that's fine.
Yeah, Dr. Latif, we, if we're comparing last year's grades and this year's grades, one of the things I want to make sure is that last year, we kept the concept of the last part of it, the fourth quarter, so to speak, after we closed out, was done basically to allow students the opportunity to improve the grade as they did it. So if I'm teaching a particular concept, and I'm teaching, and the student didn't get it in February, but then they again demonstrate the concept, and then perhaps a new concept in May, we go back and give them credit. Rolling grade books is what we've been able to do. That's why those numbers in last year were historically low.
So, so, so just to, let me just clarify, so second-quarter grades for three of our high schools for math, 2020, 21, the percent of students failing are 41% in one high school, 42% in another high school, and 37%. That's not a comparison, that's actually failing second quarter this year.
I understand that.
In math, yeah. So, or, and, and so, so, I mean, the board, I, I mean, let me not speak for the board, I, I have extreme amounts of anxiety about these numbers, and, and I worry about them, and these are numbers that sort of trend out in all subjects and all grades, and so, but anyway, I'm sorry, go ahead and answer, you, you've talked about some of the things...
If I'm teaching a concept, for example, if I'm teaching Jefferson's Declaration of Independence, and then the student... of Independence, and then the student doesn't grasp the concept, if when I teach the Emancipation Proclamation, I compare the two, if the student demonstrates a knowledge then of the Declaration of Independence in the comparison, I go back and give them credit. So I will go back and get, and go back to the first quarter when I taught the concept on the Declaration. Doesn't matter when the student, it does matter in a little bit, but you want them to get it the first time. But it's more important that they grab the concept. So if I do the comparison at the semester time, I'll go back and give them credit the first month because they've already demonstrated knowledge on that particular aspect. Because all I do is I build on the earlier knowledge, and I test it again, I assess it again. If they get the knowledge, they go back. It's very true in math.
Right. Okay.
Some of the problems that we may have had was them getting used to the virtual learning.
Sure.
That's an obvious problem. Some of it may be with Canvas or technology issues. But if the student demonstrates the knowledge later on, we're going to give them credit for that as they move forward. It's one of the concepts of standards-based grading, is that when the student demonstrates the knowledge, it's not what they look like in September, it's what they look like in June, that's extremely important. And their grade should reflect their current state of knowledge in June, or May, if you want to put it that way.
Okay. Let me go to Ms.
Chairman Latif, I'm sorry, I normally don't do this, but I'm, as someone who sat on this board and waited years for this Equity Scorecard information, while I appreciate how extremely important the topic is that we're talking about now, the students' grades and discrepancies during the pandemic, it is specifically pandemic-related. And yes, it may, this information may go on to impact Equity Scorecard information in the future. It is not what the Equity Scorecard is about. The Equity Scorecard is about what has been going on systemically in our school division for years that we now have a data picture on, and what we are, aren't doing about it. We're, there are going to be students failing during COVID, during a pandemic, because it's not normal. There's going to be bad grades, just like there's going to be good grades. And I think we have beat to death, and we should continue to talk about how we're going to help students, and how we're going to address students, and what we can and can't do, and what is and isn't working during a pandemic. But for me, this question completely erases all of the effort and hard work that I, I personally have put into trying to get us to even just talk about what's been going on for years in this school division. I'm on a racial and social justice commission. I, I mean, I spend a lot of time talking about equity. I spend a lot of time with Ms. Jesse talking about equity, and I know you do too. But it's just almost, it, it's not even almost. It is personally offensive to put in the pandemic, which is a once-in-a-hundred-year event, and its effects on our students and teachers and their grades, into our Equity Scorecard discussion, when we can't even get answers as a school board, what we're doing to address the information that we have. So I know those things were released today, and I'm sorry for being rude and interrupting. I had to get up and walk out because I don't want to use language that's inappropriate. But it, it hurt me to my core that much. Because I, I think this is really an important discussion, but this is all we've been discussing. It's been in the newspapers, it's been in the news. We, we get updates in it. It's in academic, I mean, the administrator announcements. We're constantly being told every time the superintendent has a pandemic update, what services we're going to provide, and how many students are in, and what options certain individual sites, schools are making. And it's not new news that four days a week is an option. Dr. Wells has said it for months. It's not been available to all students, but if your student has been severely struggling, he, he's said it publicly. But when it comes to this Equity Scorecard, we haven't heard anything. And I know we're doing things, but I also want to, I want the public to know what we're doing too. I want to know what we aren't doing. I know our gifted program went through a whole revitalization so that we can instruct gifted teachers that gifted students don't just look like A-plus students. But that's not being shown because our, our black and brown students only went up a percentage point. So are we, and what are we missing? Those are the kinds of things that when I'm looking at this Equity Scorecard, we should be looking about. Because we're all going to have to recover from this pandemic? That's given. It's like inflation when it comes to moving forward. But if we're not tackling the issues that are, have been present before the pandemic, they're going to be present after the pandemic. And, and that's what this was about. So I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm just that passionate about it because I want all of our children to succeed. I want all of our staff to deal with our children equitably. I want our staff to be dealt with equitably. I want our curriculum to be dealt with equitably. And, and that's why we're, that's why we're talking about this, not, not because of the pandemic. And, and I, I know that's an issue that's near and dear to your heart, and you're passionate about, and it is important. But there's only, I, I don't see how it fits.
So let me, let me just maybe speak about it in the way I was thinking about it. The pandemic has been affected different populations much differently. And the scores here for the second quarter reflect some of the same demographic challenges our Equity Report Card has shown. And so if you take a look at the schools where we have more struggles, they are the same schools where we're struggling with here on the Equity Report Card. And so as I look at it in a broader sense, on a day-to-day sense now, it's continuing. So the problems that exist in our Equity Report Card, if we take what we see here and say, okay, what are we doing with it, as Ms. Jesse points out, what's our plan? Well, one of the things is, the same patterns that exist where we struggle over the long term is where we're still struggling now, pandemic or not, but, but it's accentuated by the pandemic. And so I'm using that in my questions as an, as an example. Now, I'm very happy to sort of do my questions offline regarding this, but the reason why I bring it up under the equity issue is that the same concerns and inequitable, or rather struggles that we're seeing in different demographic populations are continuing, if not worsened, by the pandemic, and that concerns me. And it concerns me very much. And so I think this is the exact time to be talking about this. But, but I understand your passion. I don't mean to change your subject. I think you and Ms. Jesse made it clear tonight to the, the board and to the staff that we want to know what we're doing about making the improvements on each of these things, and that's truly understood. And so I take that and bring up the question, well, we look at this, we have the same patterns of problems in our schools that we're now seeing on a daily basis in the pandemic, and even more accentuated. And I would like to know, and, and we've, we've heard from you all, the kinds of things we're doing for this, but is it enough? How are we assessing if it's enough? Are we having the summer programs and the enrichment opportunities that is going to help address the long-term issues that have continued to be an issue here, and the short-term accentuation of the problem? So I don't see this as a, as a thing, and, you know, I, we won't, we won't turn this into a discussion between you and me. We can certainly do that offline. I understand and, and take your comments sincerely and, and accept them. But that is the reason I ask these questions. It is because it continues to be an accentuation or perpetuation of the current problems that exist in the school system, not by fault of anyone, but by a pandemic. But we also have to deal with those. And so how we deal with them is going to end up being reflective of how we deal with equity in general. Ms. Jesse, I, I have a number of folks here, but go ahead, Ms. Jesse.
I agree with both of you. You know, this is, you know, for, Ms. Williams has been, this period on the board for me, it's been 30, 40 years of watching these kids in these lower-income schools not learn at the same level. I've been searching and searching. I went from program to program to program until I found professional learning communities and found that there's research out there, there's places where kids can learn. But also, I think that your concern, if there were equity gaps before the pandemic, where are we now that the pandemic? Those kids, that gap is probably widening. And maybe tonight is not the night, but maybe we do need to have a discussion on the gaps that are probably widening as a result of the pandemic. And I think it is a separate subject, but it needs to be discussed. To be honest with you, when I looked at the participation rate in some of the Title One schools, I was very concerned because I've been a Title One principal, and I know if you want to get those kids in, you've got to get out there and get them in. I, I know that I looked at data which showed that the participation rate in some of those schools, in some schools, there are very few kids actually participating. So I think it's a separate report that needs to be addressed in relationship to the pandemic. Does that make sense, Dr. Latif?
Yes, Ms. Jesse. And again, if, if my question was very similar to the one you left with when we did the, the question, at the end of the night, you asked, and I, I don't know how to term it exactly, when Ms. Maria Burgos gave us the report, late at night that night, you said, this is all great, but what is, how are we going to measure our ability to make an improvement in this? And so my question today is along those lines of how are we measuring what we know to be a continued problem, and now it's continuing and made much worse with the pandemic? And what are we going to do about it? And are we doing the right things? And are we being as aggressive, as proactive, as, are we, you know, are we doing the best we can to get, to get the students the, the help they need? Are we getting on the phones, calling those families, engaging them, and, and saying, can we, can we get in there? But that, that's enough for me. I'll go to Ms. Wall, and then whoever's next after that.
All right, thank you. This was very interesting to see this presentation about the Equity Scorecard. I, I actually really liked it. And I appreciated the opportunity to kind of get a walkthrough of what data is available on the website and where I can go to find additional information. You know, if I want to get down in the, in the weeds, I really appreciate it. So thank you. I just had a question. One, is, is there anywhere on, on the website where we define for folks who might not know definitions, like what is equity versus equality? What is considered a disability? Or what, how do we define, you know, English language learner, you know, the categories or anything? I, I just know, like, we kind of all know it. We know the lingo, and we know the categories, and we understand, you know, what, what all of these definitions are. But if a member of the public were to go looking for this information, do we have anywhere on the, on there that we have, maybe a section on definitions? That's my first question. We can pause there before I get to my second question, if you would.
Dr. Latif, what I could do is, I could ask Mr. Gilfoyle if he knows offhand in terms of what's available on the web in that regard. But if not, we are, we can certainly do some follow-up and close the loop back with you, Ms. Wall, and the rest of the school board.
Okay, that would be great.
Mr. Iman, I can speak to the data, the school data profiles that we publish. We also have, there's a definition of terms there. It's more in terms of what the different data elements are. But Ms. Wall, we can look at that, and on the Equity Scorecard page, we've talked about adding a glossary for some of that, too. So that's something we're looking into. So sorry, Mr. Iman, to jump in, but that's what, we, we do have some data definitions, and we're, we'll, we'll work on expanding that also.
Okay, great. I think.
Oh, thank you. That answers the question. And I also am aware that there's BDEOE resources, and they have a tool and a glossary that we could link to that would assist with that.
That would be awesome. Because I, I know, you know, as, as data gets out, folks will be looking around, and it would just make it easier for everybody, especially somebody looking at it for the very first time, who might not quite understand, you know, what terms we're talking about as we put, you know, we make categories and things like that. My second question is kind of related to what we were talking about before, but, so the data that we received in that information item, you know, that Dr. Latif was referring to, it does relate to equity, especially if we were to take that data and break it down using the equity lens. And so my question is, what is the timeline for taking that data and doing that, breaking it down through that equity lens, looking, you know, have, when we take this new data, are we going to put it through that equity lens so we get a better picture of what we're, you know, the consequences of the choices that we've made this year in dealing with the pandemic, right? We've all done what we, we thought was best. But obviously, this data is going to be able to show us some things, and we'll be able to refine and focus our efforts to see where there are, there are gaps. Are we, I'm assuming we have plans to do that? Am I correct?
Yes, Ms. Wall. And so in, in one piece, you're going to get one piece of information in a board information item on Friday. And then in terms of the, the grades and stuff that Dr. Latif and you were just referencing, with the third quarter ending, we're going to be able to pull in third quarter to include some of the same things you were asking about, not only with the equity lens, but in terms of also the enrollment status in person and virtual, which for secondary school, we couldn't do before the third quarter. But we're in the process of doing that exact thing. So you're going to get some information that breaks things, breaks things down in this Friday's packet, and then as quickly as we can get that, those third-quarter grades and get all of that done, that's the next step for you. So it's coming very soon.
I appreciate that very much, and thank you for putting together this report. And I look forward to the discussion that we have, the next steps. What, what do we do next with this data? What does this data tell us that we should do and, and need to do to help all of our students, all, all of our students achieve? So thanks very much.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you. I'll be brief. Thanks for all the comments and the original requests from my colleagues in the Woodbridge and the Aukwun District. Thank you, Dr. Casada, and the entire complete team, and the Equity Committee, and our Associate Superintendents and such. Just some things that we're thinking, and especially to maybe a more urgent need, and something that, you know, again, I'm not looking for answers right now, just considerations. And it kind of goes along the lines of some of the stuff that's been brought up is, we know that there's, you know, I'm going to call it a catastrophic learning loss, not just in our county, but all over the country as a result of COVID-19. And so we're all, and when I say we're all, districts all over the country collectively, are looking at ways of extending learning and tackling learning loss. So from that lens, you know, it looks like, you know, we're saying we're looking for support of mental health, we're looking for more support of allocating resources in school operations, but just something I'd like to see possibly considered more urgently, I guess, with the timeline is, how is that being factored into the resources we're putting together for students at the conclusion of the school year in June, as we look at ways of extended ELL, extended year services, ESY, excuse me, I'm trying to think what it was called. Just different things in summer school programs and the allocation of resources, are we, you know, making it more accessible, especially if we're looking at this data? More programs available for these different groups of students, especially ones that, you know, as we've heard, referenced by Dr. Latif and such, of some of the more challenging areas that we're trying to improve. So are we going to have the resources available to better support those students? Another thing I just wanted to look into, and again, down the road, this can be a topic for the committee and potentially the new administration, is, you know, factoring equity when it comes to what, you know, I believe is when we develop a unique profile of Prince William County graduates. And I think our school system does a great job of trying to make as many programs, especially at the high school level, for students with the busing and the different ways we get students there. But I would love to kind of look into that more and see if they're really, you know, if, if we look into kind of the student growth and some of the data and the research, you know, do the students all actually have the equal opportunity? And that goes in line also with looking at possibly the feasibility of getting a governor's school in the East and having one in the West, so each side of the county can have one, in my opinion, that's what I would like to see, or the possibility of looking into that. And also, given the different socioeconomic populations, I'd like to see potentially looking at the feasibility of a more robust dual enrollment program, especially since we have a large high school right across the street from one of the largest community college systems in this country. So that would definitely be something to factor and look at with the equity. Another thing to consider also, if we're looking at, like, you know, Ms. Wall was talking about a glossary in a sense of key terms and stuff like that, I'd almost like to see kind of, I don't know, with Mr. Kim or the Student Senate or student reps, is how do students define equity? And from a student lens of what do they feel, and factor into their everyday lives, as equity in Prince William County schools? Do our students feel like they have the same opportunities, depending on where they go to school or their neighborhoods, when it comes to the different pathways and programs that we have available to them? I think that would be something to kind of factor into the committee discussions and looking at scorecards and such. But those are just some ideas. I don't, like I said, don't need answers or anything, but just thoughts that I had. And again, I want to thank for all the presentation tonight on what we have when it comes to the Equity Scorecard. Thank you.
Ms. Argapour?
Just would like to add that maybe for future meetings, because equity is such a big topic and a big umbrella, it might be nice to sort of just break it down because it is a lot of information. We don't want to have a 10-hour meeting. So maybe one night, talking about equity in terms of staffing and maybe some of the training and things that are required of our staff. Another, another evening, maybe presenting to us some of the findings for elementary and, and the things that, like Ms. Jesse was talking about. And then, and then to go on into middle, another evening, maybe to go on into high school, maybe even a subtopic of just how Mr. Wilk was talking. Because this is a huge, huge. maybe even a subtopic of just how Mr. Wilk was talking, because this is a huge, huge continuum, and there's so many things underneath it that I think just breaking it down might be a, you know, it's more digestible, and we can take it in, and gives you guys time to take questions from us and consider how maybe best to answer those. So, it's just a thought.
Jackson, then.
I wanted to take a moment and thank those members of the Superintendent Advisory Committee on Equity for their time and collaboration and presentation today, and thank the staff for putting it together and the discussion that the board members had. I look forward to further updates and how we continue to look at the data through the equity lens, both as it relates to long-term and short-term goals. And I echo what Ms. Argarpur just said about breaking things down per agenda, and maybe the goals could be agenda topics. I looked over the Equity Scorecard really quickly, and the graduation data for special education students appears to be disaggregated, the same way that we last talked about it. So, I just want to make sure that I understand correctly. This is a live-in document, correct? The Equity Scorecard online is a live-in document? Let's see, yes, yes, it is. Okay. And so, one thing I would like to suggest is that I would love to continue to discuss the scorecard, and then, after you meet with individual board members, maybe, just so that the public knows what we're talking about, maybe a general theme of, like, any general concerns that each, like, a consensus of concerns for board members, maybe we could have that as part of the agenda discussion, so that the public can be aware of board members' concerns and, like, discussions and overall transparency. But thank you again for the presentation tonight.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you. Just one last follow-up on this. For a formalized question in addition to all the other questions I asked, when it comes to the Equity Scorecard, if we could look at the umbrella into which, what it is that we are doing differently than the state has mandated us to do in regards to equity for our students through all of the lenses to which we view equity? What is it that we are doing that is mandated? And what is it that we aren't doing that is coming down the pike that we know will be mandated? For example, we started the discussion about, as Dr. Latif was saying, for summer school, having a more robust summer school. We know that's going to be in effect July 1 as a law. We know that we started a discussion about planning for return of the learning fall, five days a week, making that equitable for virtual and in-person learners, but that's also now going to be a law. So, I also want, I want to be sure that we continue to be progressive as a school division. So, I want to know what we're doing that's not only in compliance with the law and the laws that are upcoming, but what is it we're doing differently to try to add another sort of viewpoint for these discussions? Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Ralston?
Let me ask you, how many parents do you think understand the words that you were using? And how do they think to help their children? What is it that they need to do? These aren't people that graduated from, you know, some university. These may just be regular people, and they don't understand what you're talking about. I've listened to them and listened to them, and they don't know. Can we do that first and then come back and try to explain it? You've got other people's children at stake here. Thank you.
Point heard.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ralston. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Iman?
Always taking in the comments, and as I say, because this is a very large topic, we've got some starting points from the comments made tonight, and as a team, we'll talk about the suggestions that came from board members. Thank you.
Okay, great. We'll wrap up that discussion and move on to Board Matters. I think we start with Ms. Jessie this evening.
I have nothing. I was on vacation, and I took vacation.
Outstanding, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Williams?
I just want to say again, I appreciate the discussion this evening on the Equity Scorecard and the Superintendent's Advisory Council, and, you know, sometimes I do get passionate, but I think I want to remind the public that we do sometimes get passionate about our subject matters, but we all do work collaboratively here on the board, and we do represent a diverse perspectives, and that's important. And I'm not usually one for outbursts of that nature, so I just want to apologize if anyone took offense to that, but I did get a little excited, but I am passionate about it. And in other news, oh, lost my train of thought there for a second. I am excited about our fourth quarter. I know that we'll have some more students coming in buildings, and some will continue to remain virtual, but we're heading here on the end of the year. One of the things that we have not done this year, as we do traditionally most years, is this board often adopts resolutions per month, and Mr. Iman, Deputy Superintendent Iman, spoke a little bit about, like, Library Month and Library Week, and I know, I could safely, I think, speak for many of my colleagues in saying that's one of the things that we have missed, and it has been, you know, I've received some constituents asking, you know, "How come you haven't done Library Month?", or "We haven't celebrated this as we normally do?". And I just want to remind the public that there, we're limited in our capabilities due to our electronic meeting requirements, and it doesn't mean that we're not mindful of those things, or we wouldn't wish to do those things, but I just, I don't think we've ever addressed that publicly, so I just wanted to throw that out there. And under the lens of equity, since we've talked a lot about it tonight, I am excited, and I hope the board is excited, that once we move into maybe the summer months, or here at the end of the school year, we can start talking about some of the exciting things, at least from my perspective, coming down the state, and do some policies in relations to what the state has been talking about with anti-racism policies, the new transgender student policies, things of that nature, because that definitely falls under equity for all students. And this board did make some very strong stances when we were first seated last year, I think it's been a year. And I would be excited to get back to working on some of those things, and I know that we've been very, very busy with the pandemic, and rightfully so, but I look forward to addressing those things and writing some policies in relation to those state mandated items. So, thank you.
Ms., we'll do Ms. Ralston.
Me, okay. I will, let me just say that I appreciate everybody's help to educate our kids here. And so, I hope you're not offended by anything anybody is saying, and that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope everybody had a great spring break. I know I did. I, for the first time in forever, that's a frozen reference, I was able to disconnect a little bit from pandemic-related issues, and it was wonderful. It was nice. And I hope everybody had a chance to do that for at least a little bit of time during this spring break, and if you were not able to do that, I highly recommend it. It's very good for the soul. This April is much better than it was, than April of last year, I can say. It's, there's a lot more hope. We have great times ahead. So, I would just urge everybody to work hard, teachers, students, everybody. We're in the home stretch. We're in, hopefully, hopefully, we'll see better days. In light of our very important equity discussion, I would encourage the Division to consider the need for, or consider recommending to the board a plan for more extensive return during fourth quarter. I appreciate Ben Kim's data from Unity Read, giving us that snapshot data for the student perspective on how in-person learning is going. I just want to say thank you to all the teachers who are working so hard, and to the students who are also working very hard to adapt to a learning environment that is very different. I know many students would like to return more days. Many are happy with how, what they've got, and many are happy with, you know, the virtual situation, but I would just encourage us to keep in mind the impact of the pandemic on our families and on our children. The data is important, and it does show that we have, that we have needs that we are not meeting under our current plan. So, I would encourage that, and I otherwise would say, carry forward, and thank you, everybody, for your hard work. We really do appreciate it.
Ms. Jackson?
I just want to take a moment and thank the Prince William County staff for putting out the pinwheels out front. It was a great reminder that April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and it's a visual reminder of the importance to recognize the impact of child abuse on families. I also want to thank the school librarians this month, and I know that a school librarian, it was always a trusted resource for myself when trying to find a way to reach a kid on their interest or reading level. Another vital resource I want to thank is assistant principals. I'm thankful for your consistent advocacy for students. Happy Assistant Principals Week, and thank you also to occupational therapists for their, work is vital in helping students access learning. In addition to thanking all those staff members, I want to thank military families of military, I don't know why I'm having a hard time talking right now. April is the month of the military child, and I know that Prince William County staff is participating in Purple Up. I want to take a moment and thank all veterans and their families, specifically children, for their continued service to our country and community. And April was also Autism Acceptance Month, and during this month, we celebrate and embrace neurodiversity. We use this time to remind us to learn that all voices, to listen to all voices, and celebrate the different gifts that everyone brings, and to simply be proud and accept neurodiversity. I would be regretful as a special educator if I didn't take a time for all parents to educate those students on opportunities to address and embrace all differences and disabilities, specifically because we've been talking about the Equity Scorecard, students with autism experience a disproportionate amount of bullying. And I also want to thank the school division staff for their specialized vaccine for students who qualify, and the support staff, the special education support staff, to make it accessible to students who qualify. And thank you.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, following off that, and Ms. Jackson's comment about Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month. I want to thank, as a parent of special needs student, I want to thank all of our teachers, our TAs, and our administrators, recognizing a lot of our special education teachers were back in school right after Labor Day this year, and servicing our kids with their disability level and support, so I want to definitely recognize them. That kind of leads me to just making sure we keep on our radar, that when those ESER funds do arrive, that we do have a serious conversation about those bonus compensations, and keep that still at the forefront. With military families, I'm excited to see my push for that 9/11 Remembrance Committee moving forward. I would recommend, if my colleagues haven't put anyone on that committee yet, I think we probably still have time, the first meeting. We don't have time anymore? They were due. Well, maybe I can talk to Ms. Goss and see if we can extend that. I don't know. How many? Okay. Okay. Well, I'm excited about that formation and that committee starting to meet on April 12th, and working on remembering the 20th anniversary of 9/11. And then, finally, I do want to recognize, I did, you know, strangely, this way, the way the winter, the fall sports were played in the winter, I did go to four different Friday night football games. It was a good way to get out of my house and run, and I want to thank, recognize my two teams. Potomac Football ended up 4-2, and Forest Park ended up 3-3, so good seasons, so. Anyways, I yield my time. Thank you.
Ms. Argarpur?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I'm going to be very short tonight. We just got back from a spring break. I hope everyone did get to enjoy their break. I want to thank the, continue to thank our teachers and staff for all the work they've been doing. Last night, we had a Board of County Supervisors meeting where we presented the budget to them, and there was a little bit of talk about how great Prince William County is at pinching a penny and getting a good bang for their buck, but I want to remind you that that comes on the backs of the employees who do work here, and as we are making budget decisions, and we've gone through a very, very difficult year, yeah, if we can find that money for a bonus for teachers and staff, that would be fantastic, but just, it's been really rough, and, you know, a lot of people are making decisions about what they're going to do for next year in terms of their careers. I happen to think that teaching is the most noble thing you could possibly do, ever. You are the reason that there are careers of other careers, right? There's, you're the reason, you show up to school, and you inspire children, and you help them foster their interests. I don't care if you're the bus driver, I don't care if you're the assistant principal, I don't care if you're their teacher for just a few weeks or for several years. You make an impact on them. So, it's really important that we remember that this year's been hard, and we need to make sure that, I know, at some point, Teacher Appreciation Week is going to come up. I don't know when it is. I know it's coming soon. Please, please, we're at the last bit of the school year, just thank those people who have been guiding our students virtually and in person. Remember to wear your mask, wash your hands, keep your distance, and if you do not feel well, go to the doctor, stay home. Thank you, have a good evening.
Outstanding, Ms. Argarpur. I was worried you were going to forget. We are, Ms. Evinor, I didn't get an update on the metrics, but I think we had a bad week last week, a little bit of a bump up. Are we bumping down now again, or are we still sort of in that upper category?
We're still kind of a little-
Okay, all right. So, Ms. Argarpur, can you say it again? You can take my minute, it's just-
Please, wear your masks, wash your hands, keep your distance, and if you are not feeling well, please stay home, consult with your doctor.
Outstanding, outstanding. Yes, and get vaccinated, we'll add that. Please get vaccinated. The vaccinations are being opened for broader community, more groups, students, I think 16 and older starting a week or two, so please get vaccinated. It is very important. If you have any questions about getting vaccinated, you know, the Virginia Department of Health website's fantastic, Vaccinate Virginia has a lot of great information about that. Please take that seriously. Thank you, Ms. Argarpur, for reminding the community that we did go to Board of County Supervisors last night, and it is on our agenda item tonight for final markup. We approved our final markup for the budget. We did present the budget to the Board of County Supervisors. We asked the public that if you love your schools, which we do, and we've given our heart and soul for it by being up here for hours and hours and hours, we love our schools. If I don't say that enough, and if people presume that because I talk about scores, that I think there's something wrong with our schools, I want everyone to know, we have the best damn school system in the United States of America. I am very proud of our school system. I'm proud of all of our folks who teach in it, who work in it. I'm proud of our outstanding HR department, who's made us one of the number-one places to work for in the state of Virginia for school divisions, and 11th overall. I'm proud of our finance team, who's done an outstanding job with our budget, and we delivered another great budget that Dr. Walts prepared and helped promote to the Board of County Supervisors. I asked the public to lobby the Board of County Supervisors to give the schools full funding that it requires, and continue to make our school system great. The property values don't go up by accident here. People want to come and live here. They want to come to our schools. And I have four children in the school system. I've never been more proud to keep them in our school system. I've never been more proud about the quality of learning they have received. Any discussion we have here that may be tense, obnoxious on all parts, will just reflect the love we have for this school division. And it is, it is an emotional time for all of us this year. Schools matter. It matters for my four kids, matters for all the 90,000 children we have out here, and all the parents who care deeply about it. We are among the best school systems in the United States of America. That doesn't mean we don't have our problems, and it doesn't mean we don't want to try to get better. We have to do that, and we're going to continue to do that, and sometimes we'll air our concerns and maybe things that may not be as attractive as we wish they'd like them to be, but if we don't talk about them, we're not going to address them, and we're not going to fix them. And so, I thank this board for being kind enough to hear my remarks as we go through and talk about these sort of very tough, tough, tough issues from time to time. and talk about these sort of very tough, tough, tough issues from time to time. I want to congratulate all of our sports that have been going on for all the year, not just our football teams. We have, wrestling had gone on, and a number of our sports, we've done well. We have our students coming back to schools feeling great. We have our virtual program going better and better, and every day it gets a little bit better. And I most want to congratulate our seniors, those of you who've made decisions to join the military, those of you who've made decisions to go to college, community college, those of you who've been accepted to your schools, those of you who are making those decisions about what you're going to do next year, please reach out to your counselors. They're there for you. These decisions don't have to be made all by you and yourself. You have parents and great counselors and great principals and great teachers over the years who are rooting for you, as we all are. With all of that, this school board meeting is adjourned. Thank you.